Call to order the regular council meeting for November 18, 2025. We start on time so we can end on time. And like all the meetings, we start out with the invocation tonight by Mr. Servant, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Causey. If I can get everybody, please stand.
Your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather here in the harbor of your safety, we thank you for fellowship and family. We ask that you strengthen us, restore us, and inspire us with your love. Lord, will you fill us with your peace so that as we journey onwards, we pour out your love and grace to others? In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next up is public input. We've had a couple of people sign up. Both of them have spoken before, so I'm sure they're familiar with the rules. Mr. James Millward, I'm not really sure what you're going to talk about, but I know it's the SWA because it always is.
How you doing tonight, everybody?
Good.
I'm here tonight because I've gotten eight flat tires this year, and I think it's all coming from the recycling centers. I only go to one Sock Asti. So eight flat tires and it's 10 months, that's pretty sad. And it costs, you know, $25, $30 to fix a flat tire. When I was, my whole thing was they got magnets that run on wheels that you can scan over the area, and I would be willing to pay for it because it would save me money, and I would be willing to even go and do it if you gave me your blessing and there wouldn't be any liability. I would sign papers, whatever, and scan the area for screws and staples and, you know, I don't want to take anybody's job away, but I mean, you know, the people of Ori County, I'm sure they don't like flat tires as much as I don't like flat tires. But then I had a gentleman, a real good friend of mine, mention that his son has been in and out of trouble. He's 16 years old, in and out of trouble, in and out of trouble, and having to go to the academy here, you know, got kicked out of school, kicked out of school for vapes or whatever. Nothing really bad, bad, but having to go to the academy. And he got sentenced for eight hours of public service. So this father said, well, why don't you go to county council and see if we can get the public service to be at the recycling center? And I thought about it, and I said, well, you know, it sort of makes sense. I mean, they're supposed to be punished for what they've done, so why not, you know, go ahead and let them go ahead? We can get them, you know, some, the vest and all, and a little shield for the face, a little hard hat, gloves, whatever. I mean, these boys and girls are 16, 17 years old, and the only problem I think is liability. So that's what I'm here for is would Ori County say yes to something like that? Or is it beyond your payoff? Because send them to prison, and that's where they're going to end up. Each individual person in prison costs tens of thousands of dollars to house. I know, I've been there. So, and that was 50 years ago. So I'm saying let's catch them and make them serve a sentence rather than, because this gentleman says it's so hard to get people to allow them to do public service because their children are in trouble, it's a liability for businesses, just like it'd be a liability for Ori County. People don't want them around because they've been in trouble, they think they're little thieves, you know? It's just hard to get somebody to do it. Another grandson of a friend of mine has been Narcaned five times. If anybody knows what Narcan is, it's bringing them back to life. The last time they found him, he was a half a mile from home laying in the ditch, and they called the ambulance and they brought him back to life. Well, he still gets in trouble, gets in trouble. And I'm thinking that this will bring humility to them because I want them to be put at a, at a place which crushes and they go to the cars and take the garbage out for the elderly. I mean, I was there one day and a little old lady, and I say little old lady, elderly woman, got out and she had this purse as big as a suitcase, and she's got three bags of trash in her trunk, and she grabs one of the bags, and it's tough for her. And I was behind her and I threw my bags in, and as I was walking back, I just grabbed those other two that was in her trunk and walked and threw them out. She went back to her trunk and she's looking on the ground underneath the car because those two bags done disappeared. And then it brought to me, well, why couldn't we have these young men who's in trouble do this? And it would be almost like a drive-through recycling center. It would speed up the process, people don't have to get out of their car, pop the trunk, kids get out, grab the trash, and only do it for Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, four hours. If they get eight hours of public service, that's two Saturdays. I just think it's a win-win scenario for everybody. You could put on their little vest, Ori County tax dollars hard at work. I mean, you could get sponsorship from different areas that would give the boys or girls a sandwich at 12 o'clock, you know, give them a coupon. You work for four hours, here's a coupon, go get you a free hamburger. To me, it gives them direction rather than mowing the neighbor's yard and saying it's public service. I want them to pay a price and be there, be there unloading trash, and all their friends see them there, it'll give them, you know, they might not want to do any more bad things. But it's just something that was on my mind that I thought I'd bring to your attention, maybe you'd talk amongst yourselves. And like I said, I don't know about the liability. That's the only thing that would scare me.
Sir, thank you for coming out. I'll let you know, we do have some kind of program like that already in place, and we can expand on it, talk with all the people that are part of it, and then...
Well, I talked to a Mrs. Vanda who works for the...
We'll get into it, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. All right, next up is Stephanie Chia Petta, and she's going to be talking, I don't know what it's about, but it's always about infrastructure, so let's hear from her.
I was a little bit of that. Later this evening, we're going to be talking about the Imagine 2040 Plan, which is a joke because it's really not a plan. We are constantly changing the zones to accommodate the builders and developers, and this body, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission, are selling out the rural nature of this county. You are owned by the developers. And a couple of months ago, a rep from the SC DOT was on the news stating that there were not enough funds. This is one of the problems is we have these large tracts being developed, and we don't have enough road, or we don't have wide enough roads. We're not looking at the infrastructure of the roadways. And the SCOT said there was not enough funds in their budget to widen roadways or build new roads. They were, they've been working on repairs and didn't even have enough funds to make those repairs. The residents want to know, what is it going to take to put a halt on rezoning for large tract development? Mount Pleasant put a halt on, a temporary halt on rezoning. Why can't Ori County? How can we work together to preserve the rural nature of our community? After all, it should be about people, not profit. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. All right, that will close public input for tonight, and we'll move forward to the approval of the agenda contents, and if there's no objection, we will do that by acclamation. Hearing none, so ordered. Also for the approval of the amendments for the regular meeting of October 7, 2025, likewise by acclamation, if there's no objection, hearing none, so ordered. Moving down to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Brings us down to presentations and resolutions. Resolution R. 155-2025, to recognize the Ori County Oyster Stewardship Program. Mr. Brent Carey.
Good evening, council. I'm Brent Carey, watershed planer for Ori County. Tonight, I'm proud to introduce the Ori County Oyster Stewardship Program, where waste becomes resource, students become scientists, and communities restore the waters that define The inlet connects our beaches and our marshes, two cornerstones of our economy. Pollution has weakened the marshes' natural ability to filter water, and at the same time, we're losing one resource that can help restore it, the oyster shell. Right now, most oyster shell ends up in food waste and goes straight to the landfill. But if we recycle the shell, it becomes a material that renews our marshes. Oysters are one of the most effective natural filters that we have. Our goal is to create a self-sustaining system, turning the waste product into a resource for long-term resilience. Oyster consumption across the Grand Strand creates a steady stream of shell. What we eat can become restores and protects our waters. Shells collected from restaurants, festivals, and transfer stations, and this is an important part. This transport, this transport bridges the gap between consumption and turning this into a material that we can use. After collecting, shell cures outdoors for about six months. It removes biological risk and turns the shell into high-quality restoration material. This material is good for oyster larva in the spring to adhere to. Curated shell becomes the base for new oysters. They grow into living walls that filter water and naturally protect our shorelines. This is where the cycle pangs off. We've already seen this program, what this program can do. Loris FFA and the South Carolina Score Program and our Stormwater Field crews have driven this forward for about the last two years. Loris FFA even built more baskets than the Marines at Paris Island, and DNR likes to joke about that one. And they've also received national recognition for the program. These MWR baskets are placed where active erosion is taking place. And now we have the largest man-made oyster reef in the state of South Carolina, filtering 210 million gallons of water every day. Oyster reefs are living walls. They reduce sediment loss and filter water. Each basket, each one of those baskets up there can be the home of 7,000 oysters. It's a nature-based infrastructure, it's low cost, it's self-sustaining, and environmentally beneficial. The path forward is clear. We strengthen our partnership with the DNR and the Solid Waste Authority. We launch a county-wide shell recycling program that collects shells from restaurants, festivals, and transfer stations. We continue to engage schools, colleges, and communities, and build a network that restores our estuaries and protects our beaches and our marshes that define Ori County. What we throw away can become what protects us. Ori County isn't just building reefs, we're setting the standard for environmental stewardship in the state of South Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. That was excellent. That was an excellent presentation. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Next up is Resolution R. 156-2025, recognizing the winners of the 2025 Ori Soil and Water Conservation District Essay Contest. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We'll recognize Brandon Wagner and Nina Warren.
It's a pleasure to recognize the winners of this year's Ori Soil and Water Conservation Essay Contest. Up here today, we have Caisley Blanton. Caisley's a fifth grader at Green Sea Floyd Elementary School. The other winner was Kylie Sessins. She was not able to make it today, but she's a seventh grader at Myrtle Beach Middle School. Also with Ori Soil and Water Conservation, we have Nina Warren and Shane Willoughby. This essay competition has a long tradition in Ori County. It started back in 1943. That's 82 years of encouraging students to think about and write about conservation in this county. I want to read the resolution for you real quickly. Each year since 1943, the Ori County Schools and Ori County Soil and Water Conservation District have sponsored an essay contest for students focusing on the conservation and protection of our natural resources. The Ori County Stormwater Management Program, recognizing the value and importance of this event, has become a cosponsor of the contest, and this year's contest topic for fifth grade was, now that you have designed a device to aid in water pollution cleanup, write an argumentative response to persuade readers that your device would be an essential tool to help keep Ori County water supply clean. The seventh grade topic was, suppose you live in an area that depends on an aquifer for water. Over the past several summers, temperatures have been higher than normal, and rainfall has been less than normal. As a result, water levels in the aquifer have dropped, and residents have had to restrict water use. A town meeting has been called, and residents have been invited to speak. Prepare an argument for or against the builder's proposal, support your position with evidence, including the use of your model. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ori County Council commends all the students and teachers who participated, and especially recognizes fifth grade district winner Caisley Blanton of Green Sea Floyd Elementary School, and seventh grade district winner Kylie Sessins from Myrtle Beach Middle School. Caisley, it's an honor to give you this award today.
Thank you.[1014.13][1014.13](APPLAUSE).
Aye.
Next, we'll have the presentation of the Ori Solid, whoop, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. The presentation of the Ori Solid Water Conservation District's 2025 Conservation Service Award.
Thank you for this time. Good evening, council members. I am Shane Willoughby. By Brandon's speech, he introduced me, but I am the chairman of the Ori Soil and Water Conservation District here in Ori. I'm here tonight to make a presentation, and, but I thought it would be best if I told who's making the presentation a little bit about us before I did that, considering the nature of this. As many of you know or may not know, the Ori Soil and Water Conservation District has been helping Ori County citizens since our organization in 1942. I think Brandon said 1943, we won't quabble about that, but you know, just a year there. We are made up of five local members who are elected and appointed officials. Our main goal is to assist land users with natural resource problems. This goal allows our federal partner with the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Service, and our state partner, South Carolina Department of Natural Resource Conservation Division, to have locally-led conservation and representation. We have provided each member, council member, with some information about ourselves. Our annual report, our local success story with South Carolina Department of Environmental Services, and the South Carolina Department of Natural Resource Report, so you can see some of the activities and funds we can bring into the county. A local partnership that we are very proud of with Ori is with the Ori Stormwater Division. We work with Stormwater to help maintain the local water sheds, maintain drainage problems on individual farms, and improve the water quality here in Ori County. One of the most successful programs we have implemented is with the collaboration with EPA and South Carolina Department of Environmental Service, using a water quality grant to repair over 1,300 household failing septic systems over the last 10 years. Tonight, we can also, you can also see that with our alliance with Ori County Stormwater and Ori County Schools, and with Ori County Schools, continue a 60-year contest with students who write essays about improving, conserving, and maintaining Ori County's natural resources. Annually, we have about 5,600 Ori County students that participate in the essay competition while learning about our beautiful natural resources and writing research essays. So that's a little bit about us, but now we get to the reason that I'm here tonight. For over 48 years, this district began recognizing local farmers, educators, and community leaders for their dedication to conservation. Tonight, we are here to present the Ori Soil and Water Conservation District Conservation Service Award for 2025 to Chairman Johnny Gardner, for his assistance in helping promote conservation and our continued partnership with Ori County. We recognize him at our, we recognize him at our annual awards banquet a few weeks ago, but Chairman Gardner was unable to attend. Busy people are busy. And, but we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, to make this presentation. We are thankful for all the support from Ori County and especially from Chairman Johnny Gardner. And if at this time, if I could get him to join me...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a plaque, and I would like to read the plaque for the assembly here. Conservation Service of the Year, Johnny Gardner, Chairman Ori County Council, for avidly supporting conservation. Ori Soil and Water Conservation District, October 23, 2025, is when our banquet was. So, but we make that presentation tonight. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it.[1331.23][1331.23](APPLAUSE). This is a great organization. What did you say is the best kept secret in Ori County? Maybe South Carolina. It's no secret anymore. These people work very hard, but I accept this on behalf of the entire council. This council works very hard with you and your organization, and for all of Ori County and all of South Carolina when it comes to conservation. This is a great council, great staff, and we're grateful for what you've done. We'll hang this in the chicken room. How about that? Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have a presentation of the Transportation Association of South Carolina's 2025 Making the Difference in Transit Award. Brian Piasik from Coast RTA.
Thank you very much. To say that Coast RTA is thankful for the Ride4 program and the voters of Ori County is probably the understatement of the year. But we felt it was really important to try to recognize the Ride4 Committee as much as we can, and so we put in a nomination for Making the Difference in Transit Award with our trade association, the Transportation Association of South Carolina. And I just want to take a quick second here to read what our nomination package said. The Ori County Ride4 Committee exemplifies the spirit of Making the Difference Award through their extraordinary service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the community. Their efforts in championing the passage of Ride4 have had a transformative impact on the future of public transportation in our region. Without the steadfast support and strategic guidance of Ride4 Committee, it is no exaggeration to say that Coast RTA would have faced significant service reductions, cuts that would have deeply affected residents, workers, and visitors throughout our area. Instead, thanks to the successful passage of Ride4, Coast RTA now has dedicated local funding for the next 25 years. The unprecedented stability allows the agency to plan confidently for service expansion and enhancements, fleet modernization, and critical capital facility improvements. And that proof is in the pudding. We were informed today by Senator Graham's office that we've been awarded 25.5 million for our bus operating maintenance facility and transit center in Myrtle Beach, and that's a tribute to Ride4 being there as our local match. So thank you so much. And so with that, we were obviously successful. The Transportation Association of South Carolina recognizes Ori County Ride4 Committee with the Making a Difference Award for 2025.[1503.53][1503.53](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir. And thank everybody who went out and voted for Ride4.
All right. Excellent. See that teamwork there? That was great. All right, now, this is the fun part of the show. We're going to honor some people that deserve it. They've been here for a long time. This is the recognition of the employees who have achieved 30 years of service, usually it's more than 30. With Ori County Government, we'll recognize the sheriff and the chief.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of council, and Madam Clerk, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you so much for continuing with this program that we honor our employees who have been working dedicated service to Ori County. And tonight, we have someone with us, Mr. Bobby Fraser. Bobby, if you'd step up. This is Deputy Bobby Fraser. He has been with the Ori County Government for 40 years. He spent the first part of his career with the Ori County Police Department, then he came over to the sheriff's office, and he worked in our, worked in our field ops division. And Bobby decided he wanted to retire here a year or so ago, and he came in and he talked with him and said he felt like it was time. Well, after he stayed retired for just a few months, he stopped by to see me one day, and we talked about his retirement and how things were going. He kind of hinted he wanted to come back. But I knew he was serious when his wife called me[1602.71][1602.71](LAUGHTER) and said, Bobby, or said, Sheriff, Bobby needs to come back to work.[1612.01][1612.01](LAUGHTER). And we chatted for a little while, we didn't have anything, but it got really serious when she called my wife[1622.66][1622.66](LAUGHTER) and said, you need to talk to the sheriff and let's get Bobby back to work. So I knew it was time, we had an opening, and Bobby came back and we talked for a little while, and he now works in our court security division. So I present to you tonight, Mr. Bobby Fraser, 40 years of service with Ori County Government. Bobby?[1645.01][1645.01](APPLAUSE).
Would you like to say?
Thank you, Sheriff. If you work for Ori County Government, it will work for you. So that's why I came back to work. Good place to work, to raise your family, and have fun. Thank you, Sheriff, for taking me back.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I also would like to recognize for just one minute, Ms. Fraser, if you'll stand up and let everybody see you.[1663.63][1663.63](APPLAUSE). Bobby, I'm about to throw it in the floor. Come on up. You stand there.
Okay, Bobby, I got this.[1668.63][1668.63](LAUGHTER). Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add that if you hang around Ori County long enough, you meet some really good people and some great workers, and a lot of people don't know this, but that young man and my dad were really, really close, and that's probably why I'm here, because of him. I'm working in the government because of him, so I'm grateful for your 40 years of service.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Billy Gardner.
Yes, sir. Billy Gardner, my friend. All right, who's next, chief?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Much like my sheriff said there, I want to thank you all for continuing to recognize our employees who dedicate their time and service to the county, and what an honor it is here to recognize them tonight. First, I would like to bring up Ms. Sharon Lilly, 35 years of service with us, with the Ori County Government. She started her career at Ori County Dispatch, moved to us after 15 years, and started in our records division, then did some time in crime scene, and now she serves the 4th Precinct as administrative assistant out in the West Precinct area. So we just want to recognize Ms. Sharon and congratulate her for her service here at Ori County for 35 years.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.[1755.73][1755.73](APPLAUSE).[1756.73]
Much like my sheriff said there, I want to thank you all for continuing to recognize our employees who dedicate their time and service to the county, and what an honor it is here to recognize them tonight. First, I would like to bring up Ms. Sharon Lilly, 35 years of service with us, with the Ory County Government. She started her career at Ory County Dispatch, moved to us after 15 years, and started in our records division, then did some time in crime scene, and now she serves the 4th Precinct as administrative assistant out in the West Precinct area. So we just want to recognize Ms. Sharon and congratulate her for her service here at Ory County for 35 years.
Thank you, too.
You know, Sheriff and I are always competing, so I've got one more. So I've got Lance Winburne, as most of you know, Deputy Chief Lance Winburne. It's been here with the county for 40 years. Chief, you can come on up. Chief started with us in Patrol Division in 1985, working his way through the ranks to his current assignment of Deputy Chief over Patrol. So I would like to recognize you, sir, and thank you for your 40 years of dedicated service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's another testament that Ory County is a great place to live and a great place to work. Thank you very much for that. We're going to move on to the reading of the ordinances. First up is Third Reading of Ordinance 80-2025, amending Article 8, Section 804 of the zoning ordinance of Ory County, South Carolina pertaining to Highway 707 overlay zone. Mr. Tyler?
So moved.
Second.
There is an amendment that's contained in the materials today. If there's a motion on the amendment?
Motion to amend.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? That passes unanimously. These next two, we're going to... All right. Thank y'all for coming out. This next one, we're going to take Paragraph 22 and 23 together as one. Their Second Reading and Public Hearings for Ordinants 93 and 94, 2025, to amend the future land use map of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan for PIN numbers 29000, 000049, and 50, and to rezone from Forest Agriculture to residential MSF 10 to Multi-Residential District MRD 1. Mr. Allen, one motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on these two ordinances? Hearing none? Anyone from council? Mr. Allen, anything?
No, sir.
All right. One vote for both ordinances. That's 53 and 54, 2025. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two pass unanimously. Moving on to Second Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinants 105-2025 to amend Section 12.5-114 of Article 4. This is the business license of Ory County Code of Ordinances to update the latest standardized business license class schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anyone from the public? Hearing none? Anyone from council? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And next, Mr. Hardy, we're going to take up Ordinance 64 and 65-2025 as one. This is to approve the development agreement with Highway 66 LLC and Equity Trust Company Custodian FBO Mark Philip Caravan located on Ashley Circle, and to rezone PIN number 271000058 from limited forest agriculture to multi-residential district. Mr. Hardy, a motion?
Second.
Okay. There is an amendment in here. If we could get a motion on the amendments in your materials?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Both of these pass unanimously. And finally, First Reading of Ordinance 106-2025 to adopt the Ory County Comprehensive Plan, Imagine 2040, five-year review, including the resilience element.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We voted on the amendment, but not on the actual ordinance.
Back to the, as amended. Thank you, sir. We'll go back and revisit 64 and 65, 2025, for the ordinances, both as amended. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Now, we move to 106-2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And we will hear from Ms. Heather Davis.
Good evening. As Chairman mentioned, my name is Heather Davis. I serve in the Planning and Zoning Department. I'm going to talk about Imagine 2040, our five-year review of the comprehensive plan. We're going to start with our timeline. We initiated the process with Planning Commission in May, and then our public outreach started from July through September. We had a public input survey that was online. We had a story map, and it was also on our website as well as the draft plan. Then we moved on to the Planning Commission review, which they reviewed and made a recommendation and sent it on up to us. Tonight, we're introducing it to you all. Our survey elements were the, we highlighted these six elements, and we had a total of 799 responses. These are three examples of our survey questions with a breakdown of the survey responses.
Can you just, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So, so almost 60% of our population's been here less than 10 years?
Yes, sir. At least of the responses, yes, sir.
Okay.
This one, I want to talk about resilience. We added a new element during this review, so we want to talk about the process of adding resilience element. We utilize all of these maps that are shown up here. We have a variety that were utilized during this process to draft the element. These are other agencies and organizations that provided input and feedback. We received this positive feedback from Brunswick County. And this was, in closing, this is the Word Cloud. We asked, what do you love about Ory County? And these were the responses, some of the responses that we've received. Thank you.
Questions from council?
Very good.
Very good. Any questions? Okay.
I still think that the word southern should be bigger.
Well, if there's no questions, we'll vote on it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes. Next up are the memorial dedications. Dr. Causey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Robert Morgan Smith, Mary McQueen Brogdon.
Sir, Mr. Anderson?
Philip Eugene Harrelson, Brenda M. Arrakis, Dimitri Yakonas.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eva Sutherland.
All right. Dr. Deuce?
Mr. Thurman McLam.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Jack Edwards, Kenyon Smith, Billy Peavy, Joseph Evans, Jan Gasky, Thomas Kite, Nathan Collins, Ray Owens, and Kevin Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. We will honor these individuals by adjourning the meeting tonight in their name. Please pay attention to the upcoming meetings. They are listed in the agenda, but they are subject to change, and you can follow up on our social media. We do have an executive session tonight to receive legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, and discussion of matters related to the proposed location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area. If I can get a motion?
Motion to enter into executive session.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.[1110.92]
Voice relating to pending and threatened litigation. They also engaged in matters relating to the proposed location expansion or provision of services encouraging
Location or expansion of industries or businesses to the area. While in executive session, no decisions were made and no votes were taken.
Thank you. That concludes the business of the county for the Mr. DeSabato. We are.